All right, let's go to the read board please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, any additions or corrections? See none, all in favor, vote by say aye.
Aye.
Vote same time. Films. Any additional bills on our desk?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second, any questions or discussion on the desk? No additional discussion. You're not all, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Ritt.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
White.
Aye, motion carries. Financials. What we got?
Um, everything looks good, we just have to do, um, for next meeting, do a transcript.
Questions, discussion?
Will be approved of financials without some evidence.
If I. There are motion to second to approve financials, that's really discussion. See none, all in favor, vote by say aye.
Aye.
Vote same time. Motion carries. Agenda. And, uh.
Will be approved.
Motion to second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by say aye.
Aye.
Vote same time. Motion carries, the agenda is adopted. Good speaking. Very loud.
Yes.
Hi.
Morning.
Good morning, thanks for having me.
Um, can I ask real quick, just for reminder sake, if you're gonna speak from the back, you have to speak up real loud because the speaker up here is what's picking it up and he gets them all holed up.
Okay.
Just like scream at it or something.
Yeah, I usually don't have trouble with that, so.
Okay, just trying to remind everybody as we speak today during the meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you, um, I think Candy sent out the, uh, my budget request, her my budget for, um, 2021. I threw a lot of information at you a couple weeks ago regarding indirect costs, and you can see there's an indirect budget for each county, and there's also a, uh, direct budget. The total operating budget for our agency is five million, four hundred, um, seven dollars, five million, four hundred and seven, eight hundred and two dollars and four cents. So, um, going forward, the indirect, of course, comes out of, um, costs are reimbursed also by the state of North Dakota, that's been a huge heartburn with, um, a lot of commission. I think sometimes not totally understanding that process. Um, I talked to you and I gave you information, I sent out to some of you, uh, an audio explaining the countywide cost allocation, and that is a mechanism, a cost allocation is a mechanism where the state of North Dakota draws down on federal dollars related to social services. So, uh, pick on the state's attorney. The state's attorney reports each year how many hours she spends, um, doing, uh, social service work, um, deprivation petitions, that type of thing. And then the state reports that and draws down the dollars. You get a report that's two years late, so when you hear me talk about indirect costs being two years behind, that's where it comes from. So we're actually operating on 2016 numbers reported to the countywide cost allocation, it takes it up about two years to get the report. The legislators saw that report in 2018 and based our, um, reimbursement for indirect costs based on that 2018, which is 2016 numbers countywide cost allocation, so it's very confusing for folks. So there's been a huge rub with some counties, and, um, I'm looking at Ed because we experienced that in our last board meeting, uh, Mountain Lakes Human Services Board meeting. So some of the counties budgeted some of that countywide cost allocation, like the reimbursement for the, the state's attorney, they budgeted that as revenue for their general county, um, budget, which caused some heartburn because we, as Mountain Lakes Human Services Zone, voted early in January to keep all the indirect monies and then reimburse back. So those, that indirect, that indirect cost line for each county, you can see, I think we, I broke it out, each county, so, you can see that, that is rent, um, cars, maintenance of cars, any indirect cost. So getting back to the countywide cost allocation, it's not dollar for dollar, so state Carrie reports she spent ten dollars for the year in 2016 doing social services, she, we did get eighty percent of that back. Doll Rimple, I, I can't remember, 2018, early on, changed the countywide cost allocation again in an attempt to, um, in an attempt to save property tax dollars for the citizens of the counties because social services was a heavy burden. So getting back to, she reports ten dollars, we got twenty-five percent of that back. So, you know, if you look on there, some of the state's attorney reimbursement is four grand, six grand, it's not a lot of money. So that's kind of the long and short of it. So what I need from you today, based on some of our work, which, you know, we have a legislative year coming up now in January, I think that the big questions are gonna be about the indirect costs and why, 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 why? Because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, I understand, about that money coming back to you, and it is state dollars, there, there aren't county dollars in there, but the rub is, we should get to take the state's attorney money because we are, out of our county budget, pay the state's attorney. Now, our county, Tower County and Benson County has always put that back into the, the, the social service budget, so it's not been such a rub for us. However, Rolet County, huge issue for them. Um, so, I think I hit all the high points I wanted to. Um, it's, it's, it's somewhat complicated, but not. So the direct, the, the budget all in total is the five million dollar figure I gave you, so what I'm asking today is a motion to accept that budget. Um, I'm going to be doing the circuit, Tower County's commission meeting was canceled today, so I'm, I'm not going to Tower County, but, um, yeah, so you're the first ones to get a look at it, um, the first commission to get a look at it, so I'll just stand for instructions.
Rhonda, I see Tower County's like forty-nine hundred and three dollars, so would that cost is in on Ramsey County, is that correct?
Um, well, um, we, we formed a district like twelve or fourteen years ago, I'm not sure, that timeline, it was before.
So we're still running out through there?
Right, so they, they had very low, we had this dig for her to get that, so, um, again, if you look at the costs, you can see some of the counties are quite high.
Right.
And they have, they rent buildings, um, Rolet County has a building and the sheriff's old, it's an old house that the child welfare folks are in, and they charge off rent to the countywide cost allocation for that. We have space in the buildings, we have space in the loan rent, which is pretty low, um, so the costs are lower. Um, cars, I, we did not budget for any cars this year, which I'm hoping is not a mistake. Um, we have a couple cars with pretty high mileage, we do a lot of placements, um, Raleigh, North Dakota, we drive, um, northern Minnesota, we drive, we, we have to drive a lot of places to visit children that we have placed around the tri-state area, probably Colorado, we don't drive there, we fly there, but that's an indirect cost.
Did we put some cars into the 21 budget?
No, we did not.
What does the state direct us to do on that?
Um, to follow the procurement, uh, guidelines for new cars, and, um, just did not have any need to, um, go, Rolet County has three cars that one of them could probably be displaced. We're running on one of them that, that with the procurement, um, regulations, a couple years in mileage, I'm not sure what they are right now, but we skimmed under that, so we did not ask for any cars. If it would've been just our county and, and Tower County, um, based on our history of fixing cars, fixing cars, fixing cars, and it doesn't come out in the end, I probably would've requested a car, but, um, with everything else that was going on, it just didn't seem that it was, to be really honest, worth a fight.
In your opinion, do you think Rolet County's concerns got answered the other day at our regular meeting?
No.
You don't think so?
Well, I think that they understand how indirect dollars are allocated back. Um, they believe that they spent in 2016, uh, that thirty-five, eight thousand dollars to employ the state's attorney for social service costs, they want that twenty-five percent of that three thousand eight hundred dollars they report, or thirty-eight hundred dollars they, thirty thousand dollars they reported back, and that is not the way we decided to do our zone. Each zone had the option to do our finances the way we did, um, and, um, I think it's very difficult, the way the bill is written, it's a kind of an and/or, or maybe other zones have done this, we chose to keep all the money in Ramsey County and pay the bills, give us your bills, because we wanted control of our budget, obviously. Um, and that's been, they also, um, employ our contract with the custodial service to clean the two buildings that we rent in Rolet County, so their costs are higher. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm guessing they'll be talking to legislators and they want this portion changed. Um, I think what, what everyone forgets at the end of the day is, we were, we were, um, uh, levying thirty, thirty-seven mills for social services and now we're levying nothing. And they were levying, they're maxed out at sixty, their whole county, so they're really looking for any place for cash, and this has been kind of what they zeroed in on. So that's, not to get off on Rolet County, but that's been pretty much our conversation at zone board meetings for, you know, most of the last three, four, five months.
It's good for the other commissioners to hear this, because none of the other counties had any problems, probably indirect costs are what. And then the board voted in January, put it, put the financial version on the fantasy, to find family, to candy. It was only one way to do it, and we all agreed on that, you can't have four checkbooks for one college.
Yeah, I think, you know, when a household budget, when you look at how that works sometimes with two people, it, it just is very difficult from my own experience, but, um, I think that, um, when you look at indirect costs, when, when we're looking at reported paper costs, copy machine costs, I mean, pens and paper, um, day to day at 2016 levels, and it's gonna be 2021, we're gonna dip into some of that state's attorney money, and I think that's what is really difficult for the Rolet County folks to, on the board anyway, to understand that this is now gonna be 2021 and we're operating on 2016 reported costs, so. Um, the other thing that I think is hard to hear, and it was very loud and clear at the legislative session in the last days when this was passed, and, um, they took out the one-time cost, Adam, you remember this, they took out the one-time cost, they took out an inflator for indirect costs, which is very, very concerning to everyone at the time. They wanted county commissions to have some, it was about, the word was back and forth, the words, skin in the game, you have to pay something, you know, and I think that social services has always been kind of like, well, yeah, yeah. And so, um, it's a very necessary, um, part of our community and it, it helps, uh, you know, we do child welfare, we do elderly and disabled, I mean, we, we serve a lot of citizens in great need, and so I think that there's, uh, part of what the 2124, Senate Bill 2124 was designed to do was philosophical, to help communities be more aware of what's going on, because I think it was really easy for commissioners to just focus on the money, unfortunately, I feel like our zone has not focused on services and focused on money, just because money's tight, and I get it, I mean, but we haven't spent a lot of time on services, and so, you know, it, it, um, hopefully as we go forward, we try to do some more, um, education about services in the community. When you don't have services for citizens, social service costs go up, when you don't have counseling, you don't have, uh, services for, um, abused families, that type of thing, county social service costs go up. We're seeing, we had thirty applications, um, well, actually, if you count across the zone, we had thirty-eight, I, applications for services yesterday. Folks are hurting, furlough, businesses haven't opened in some of the counties, um, I believe casino in, um, turmoil is still close, so those folks are really looking at where food for, for September, so we're busy, very busy. So, so those are some of the things that we'll have to figure out, we operate, and I also want to brag a little bit, our four counties operate very, very lean. Our ratio of SNAP households is fifty, or excuse me, ninety-one point five families per worker, and our neighbors are going about fifty families per worker. So it's pretty frustrating to sit and know that we do twice the work as far as serving folks, because we've always operated lean. So those are some of the things that I've been not very popular with my peer group, saying, hey, come on, we need to take a look at a caseload here that's equitable for all workers. So those are some of the things, and I, I kind of got off on a tangent, I apologize, but really what I want to do is to take a look at the budget, if you have questions, I can answer them, I'm pretty passionate about the services part of it, but I'll focus on the money today.
Rhonda, I have, I have two questions, uh, just to make sure that I, I understand, uh, so you, you said that you took a vote in January, that all of the reimbursement money ends up in the, the district itself, right?
In the zone, we, we put it to our financial, our, our host county is Ramsey County, and I'm pointing at Candy because her office then took on the payroll and pay home bills, yes.
Sure, uh, and is that binding towards the counties that are part of the district? So what I'm really asking is, is, as it stands right now, there's no way that, that, say, Rolet can treat that as general revenue for their county because of the fact that that was, is that correct?
Uh, yes and no, they did, and they are looking for it, and they want it back. So, um, I think that, um, they're short, they're, they're looking at, uh, I guess I, you could ask them, but I think they told us they're looking at a huge shortfall in 2020 and projected into a large shortfall in 2021, so yes, they are looking to get at least the state's attorney, there's, uh, we're down to the post-station machine, it's, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Sure, but, but so then the question is, is, is that sort of a memorandum of understanding between the counties that we're all agreeing that in general we're gonna return it, or is it binding? So if, if Rolet decided, hey, we're treating this as revenues to our county specifically, could they do that under the law?
No, it's, it's, it's in our bank account, so to speak.
Okay.
And at the end of the year, I know Adam has, and Ed have helped to explain that we will take a look at if they're in the indirect costs. It's separate now, because your financial person has Benson, Ramsey, you can see that in your packet. If there is money at the end of the year that will go back to Rolet County, will it be the same amount that they got, that they reported in the 2016 countywide cost allocation for the state's attorney? Probably not, because papers are out, other costs have gone out, um, so that, is that, I'm sorry, you got them wrong.
I think, I think you answered my question, I have one, one.
It's pretty confusing for folks.
One more question, which is, so you, you said that the state's reimbursement rate is twenty-five percent, is that?
Just on that countywide cost allocation portion is, the, the countywide cost allocation, it's a company that does advocates, just in those things that are claimed on there, twenty-five percent of what you claim is your reimbursement, state dollar reimbursement, which is included in the indirect pool of money, along with other costs, of indirect costs.
Okay, but, but, okay, yeah, then I understand, sure.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, it's pretty confusing, but, um.
Can I explain it how I understand it?
Sure.
Maybe, maybe we're. So if you look at the, at the indirect expense sheets, at the bottom you'll have the, the, uh, monthly, or the, the total, basically, and then you'll have the twenty-five percent cost, countywide cost allocation on top. So essentially, essentially, that twenty-five percent countywide cost allocation is what supposedly will come back to us at the end of the year for our expenses that are coming from the county. Well, you subtract out from the bottom number, that, the rest of that is the indirect cost expense that's supposed to be sitting in the zone. We decided to throw all that money into the zone because we didn't know where we're gonna come out of. Well, what's happening is, is the indirect costs are tracking higher than the costs that are the difference, so we're gonna eat, we're gonna eat into that countywide cost allocation. Uh, I think Ramsey County ran out, we're looking probably at seven, eight thousand dollars. So for us, I mean, not a huge deal, we'll just take less money in on the countywide cost allocation, but we always treat that as money that's just, you know, money that's coming back, we don't budget it, it just happens to come back. Whereas Rolet, for instance, I think theirs is fifty-seven thousand dollars, they're expecting every penny of that to get back, and they're tracking high as well, so they're gonna come up short, where the rest of us are like, well, if we come up short, okay, well, we'll just have seven thousand less dollars come back to us, where they're saying, where are we gonna come up with seven thousand twice? And that's where their concern is, because their general fund is capped on, they don't have the ability to go find more money, but we do, we just take over our general fund and be able.
They're already at sixty, though.
Yeah, they're at, they're at the tipping point, and we're not, and that's where the problem, that's where the concern goes.
So then, then that, that does sort of give rise again to the question that I was originally gonna ask, which is, is it possible or likely that a state will change or could change the reimbursement percentage?
In the next session.
I think that it's very possible in the next legislative session, because this has been a concern of other counties, I understand, it's gonna be a topic at the, um, Endakal, in our co-association counties, it's gonna be a session, I encourage you all to probably sign up for that, to listen to that. However, I would tell you that, yes, um, we use the, if you look, we'll just look at the post-station machine, and we'll take with the state's attorney. We use the state's attorney. In the past, Ramsey, Benson, Tower County have said, yep, we employ state's attorney, they've put all that in the general fund, they have not budgeted the rent, revenue coming back on the countywide cost allocation to offset their state's attorney's budget, they have not done that. They just kept it in the social service fund, and I think Candy just, you know, followed along with how, I think, almost every other county was doing. There are a few, I understand, that budgeted back, like, social services used four grand of the state's attorney. You know, you have to understand, in some counties with the population, like Adams, I was looking on Adams County, it was probably two thousand dollars, they probably had a case, maybe, because they don't have much child welfare, so they're, it probably ended up to be, you know, a couple hundred dollars. And, and so they just, it was a wash, but when you look at bigger counties with this higher child welfare caseload, and we're just looking at the state's attorney, they want that money, they're like, yeah, we, we pay, in 2016, Ellen Edwards telling, uh, we paid the state's attorney to do child welfare work for, for Benson County, or for Rolet County, we want that back. And we voted, like I said, in January to hold it, because we're certain that copy, paper, all those other indirect costs have gone out, so, thanks, Adam, I appreciate that.
Well, and, and the discussion at the, at the zone board level has been, obviously, changes are gonna have to happen in the 2021 session. We know that Representative Westman sits on our board, uh, from, from our district here, he's very aware of it, he knows, he sits on the Human Services Committee, not on the Approves Committee, but where the, where the bill draft is gonna get come through, so he's very aware of the situation. It's gonna be addressed, it's just a matter of how is it, how is it gonna be addressed? The other concern is that there are costs right now that are technically direct costs that are transitioning to indirect costs, so if we're running out of shortfall this year, we're gonna run it more of a shortfall when those indirect costs transition to indirect costs. So that's something that's gonna have to be addressed as well. Now, again, we've talked about from our perspective, we're gonna run out of shortfall, and we'll have to dip into the general, I'm still willing to trade off if we have to spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars of Ramsey County's money to get thirty-seven mills off, but, we've got the luxury of having money in the general, the ability to work with it, whereas some counties don't. Now, the question that comes in that might come up in the 21 session too, is there are provisions within the bill that are kind of, I don't know if I'd say sketchy, but we're not really sure what they mean, let's put it that way, where it states that if you run out of, uh, indirect cost money and you don't have the ability to find more money, they, they basically say the county should pay for any indirect cost overruns, but if you can't find more money, then the director can give you a waiver. So the question is then, Rolet County, if they don't have other money, would, would Chris Jones be able to give them a waiver? And then they would give them ca, I mean, so that's, there's stuff that has to be cleared up, a lot of discussions that have to happen, and what, how to get it straight, now, essentially.
Right, if there are enough changes in the bill for 2022, we'll be looking at, I'm guessing, I mean, I, it, it, well, I guess it's more than a guess, I'm pretty certainly asking, um, the director of the Human Services, which is Chris Jones, to, to waive their indirect costs and pay it. They just have to have the tax base to support the social service need, and I, we ran into that two week, you know, we were ten mills over statewide average for supporting, I gave you one graphic, um, a couple weeks ago, and I knew, like, no, I threw a lot of information at you, but, Endakal took three houses in three different counties, and what that taxpayer pays, percentage of their taxes made for social services, we were the highest. You know, we were higher percentage than past county, if you look, I don't know if you save that information, but you can see the pictures of the houses there, and so, um, this isn't a first step, or a second step, or a third step, depending on how you look at, at, at trying to, um, equalize the taxpayers' burden for social services across the state, instead of focusing on if you have no tax, taxable land to, to, to pay your bill, so to speak, for social services. So I mean, it's a work in progress, I think there's been a lot of good work done, I think 2124 essentially was good. Um, like, like Adam said, you know, it was thirty-seven mills to nothing, so it, it has to be good, it was a tax saving for the counties, but there are similar, I mean, lots of rubs with indirect costs, so.
In the conversation we had at those meeting last week, I thought Edwards was, he kind of put in that E, and I thought, when he said, well, we're gonna have to look at this at the end of the year, I mean, we really can't look at a bill then and see where it is, you know? He visited, he said that, you know, there is, you may not have to step in, talk to the director and see where that goes.
I think that was helpful, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to look at our options when we figure out exactly where we're gonna be at, essentially. We have an idea, but we don't know how the costs are gonna track at the end of the year, we'll build some plans. It's, it's, it's gonna be, at the end of the day, the zone has to function, so we're gonna have to figure out how we can, how we can work together to make it work.
You know, I, I sent a letter earlier to the, to the auditor's email stating, and I, I don't know if I included any commissioners or not, but my goal is not to levy from the general fund. I mean, we'll try our best, we've been, we operate very, very lean, we look at cost savings, we look at our total budget, we did save about thirty-three thousand dollars, which is not accurate, because the numbers for our, for our, um, the numbers for our, our health insurance came in later, we budgeted a ten percent increase for health insurance on that five million direct fund, uh, or excuse me, I, I don't know what the exact figure is for direct funds, but it actually came in at six, so there are gonna be more savings from last, from, um, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. Like you said, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we run really lean, and we give, we do provide very excellent services across our zone, there, but there are some rubs with the indirect costs formula.
If we're running out of budget on direct, we're actually doing pretty well there overall, but it's just that indirect costs are a bit more around.
Yeah, you know, we get right down to, our revenue is, I think, four to five dollars more than it was in 2016, I mean, it's just they, those things just add up.
Okay, additional questions? Discussion?
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the 2021, uh, Mountain Lakes District Human Services Zone, but it's fully discussion. See none, all in favor, vote by say aye.
Aye.
Vote same time. Carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Carrie, what time do you have, you have port to vote to, correct?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Yep.
What time will you be back?
It could be very short, or it could be very long, I should be back by nine thirty and delayed it.
Good answer.
Yeah, it depends, so.
Sarah, how long are you going today?
Like, very, very.
Okay, we'll get you done, and then we're gonna skip down to Carrie, because you need Carrie for the discussion, so. Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, so just a, a little update for Ramsey County Extension, um, our marathon of achievement days finally wrapped up on August thirteenth with our horse show. We had a total of six participants in the horse show, and it varied with all the changes that we had to make. We, uh, are still have our three gardens going, and our last senior master gardener class also, and then on August thirteenth, we had a little fall participants in that, um, every, I have got to harvest pumpkin and some other produce from the gardens, and now with the, the last bit of garden produce, we're bringing it to the high school, which is one of the, one of the schools that is still having a salad bar this full year. We recently had our four-H family fun night, uh, which is kind of the end of the year, start of the year, um, a board night for all of our four-Hers. We had that on August twenty-sixth outdoors, um, now, um, we did have the attendance, and anytime we have any, um, uh, people, uh, attendance over twenty-five, we do have, have to have a plan approved by, uh, District Health and our District Director, so, um, going forward with our four-H clubs and things like that, so anytime our four-H club will, will need to have more than twenty-five attendants, they will have to have a plan approved. Uh, we're continuing our, my guidance. We're continuing our, my diabetes prevention program, between that outdoors and having pretty good attendance with that. Our state shotgun shoot ended up getting canned or postponed last month, but it is rescheduled for September 12th of this month. And we'll have about nine participants from Ramsey County. We are hosting a state air rifle competition on September 26th. Now with that, we are just hosting our Ramsey County. Every county is holding their own competition within their, within their competition to be numbers lower. And just to let you know that NDSQ always errs on the side of caution. So anytime North Dakota has guidelines set for any COVID type situations, they're always more cautious. So that is why we might have a few more guidelines of what the state would have, such as the approval that we need for 25 or over attendance. Next, for the next meeting, our District Director, we have a new District Director named Dana Hemmott. And she would like to come to the commission meeting next month and just meet you guys and tell her to tell a little bit about herself and tell you guys a little bit better. So she'll be with Bill and I next month. And then Bill also wants to just make sure everybody is aware of the advisory for the blueberry algae for Devil's Lake and then the warning for something, he just kind of be aware and be very cautious with that. So that's what's going on with extension. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions? Okay, thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Okay, if no one has any concerns, since Kerry asked for it at nine, I'd like to jump down to the new, under new business nuisance property policy discussion just because I'd like to have Kerry here for that because I'm not a lawyer. I haven't been for it ever. So. We put this on the agenda. Commissioner Olson asked to have it put on. So would you like to, I guess, bring up what you'd like to discuss today?
I've got complaints, several complaints on a piece of property. And we've had this issue for years and years and years and years. And I just kind of wondered what we could do to get this taken care of. I know Bob wants to make an opinion. He was one of the people who discussed it with me. He's one of several. The only thing I would have to say is it's a bum eyesore and it's a shame to see a bunch of junk laying right off of Highway 19. It doesn't speak good of our community. And I know years ago when Youngs was in business, they had to put up a fence around their stuff. So I think it's something that should be addressed in one form or another. And it's not just that one place. There are other places around the community in the two mile, two mile tutorial zone that should be addressed also. If it was in your backyard, you would not be happy. And I wonder if there's some health issues. Anyone else worked at? A couple of different places. You know, we got cars, you know, one has a dozen cars on that aren't being used. You've got an old skunk, you've got an old mite. We just got to clean this up a little bit. Like Bob said, it's an eyesore to our community. The one you get off the airplane, that's what you see. The territorial thing, you know, you bring it up and you say, well, it's the city and the city says it's the county. The county says it's the city. I just like, it's back to the map and.
So there's a couple of things that could be looked at by the commission. One of it falls under the nuisance statutes in the state. So there's two different types in nuisance described by statute. One is a public nuisance, which comes with a host of available options to pursue. And then one is a private nuisance. Public nuisance is one that affects the entire community, the neighborhood, or a considerable amount of people. Private nuisance is one that affects a single person or a determinate number of people. Public nuisances can be charged out criminally. They can be sued out civilly. Private nuisances can be handled privately through civil action and things of that nature. So that's one route. Another route that those situations can be looked at is through public health. So public health has an abatement process in century code. And a particular piece of property, I think, that's being discussed today, I know in 2019, they were told to clean up specific areas because of concern for rodents and other things. And they did comply and did clean up what they were asked to clean up at that point. There's also a penalty in public health statute. So if somebody fails to follow through with a directive from public health, that's a criminal offense as well. As it relates to city and county, when it's in the extraterritorial area of the city, per the Attorney General's Office, it falls on the county in real property. So I'll answer that one for you.
What did you say, Kerry?
There's an Attorney General opinion from 2005 that really comes down to city health, county health. It's county health when it's in the extraterritorial. So those are two options to look at, to consider. I think it comes down to what the commission wants to look at for a policy. And I think it's worth a discussion to decide kind of what routes people want to look at going in certain scenarios. And it's like a toolbox of different options that could be done. So if option A doesn't work with someone, option B might work with someone, if that makes sense. Sometimes people just need a letter. Sometimes people need a phone call. And sometimes they need other invitations to come to the table, to talk about issues.
Is there penalties involved then?
Well, in criminal matters, there is. A nuisance and a misdemeanor, which is a maximum 360 days in jail, $3,000 fine or both. And other things, probation and conditions and things like that. If you do an abatement where you go in and clean it up, then you can levy that amount against the property owner. So really, that's what it comes down to. The distinction is a public nuisance versus a private nuisance. So I can do some research and find out what's considered a public versus determinate number of people. Because if it's a determinate number of people under the century code, then it's a private nuisance, which means the state's not involved, county's not involved. It's private. So maybe those are some things the commission wants to think about, consider. I can research it, send a memo up to you guys.
I have one question. In doing some research on it yesterday, I recalled a couple of cases down in that Bismarck Mandan area where I read about that they had done something with things of this nature. And they don't have ordinance structure, just like we don't have ordinance structure, which would allow for a fine and then, you know, escalating up to try to get things accomplished. They have it actually, it, I shouldn't say degree, but it's a portion of their planning and zoning. Where they have a, they have language in their planning and zoning that states you have to have this in your, your front yard has to be cleaned at this point, this kind of stuff. It has different parameters of policy essentially. And then they enforce it under their planning and zoning guidelines, which still then rolls back to a public nuisance misdemeanor being all that kind of stuff. They have the ability to then enforce over that. Now, my question would be, since we don't have planning and zoning authority over that area, does it still roll back to the county then?
Well, according to the Attorney General opinion that I looked at, it does in that limited scenario.
But could the township change in zoning?
Township could take a look at things too. Yeah.
Well, the township zoning would, why is the township zoning in a situation would matter? But it's still extraterritorial zoning though.
Yeah.
So that's, again, down to the, is it, is it our?
It's our responsibility in a public health action, in a public health action, under century code.
And the parameters for.
So for example, if we had a home rule charter, ordinance says if those powers are in there, it could be built in. Yeah.
What township are we in there, Bob? Creel?
Creel.
That's Creel.
Has anybody talked to this gentleman?
As far as I know, nobody's, nobody's addressed it with him since 2019. And what he was asked to do in 2019, he did do.
Discussion, make your thoughts.
So you just basically have to decide if it's a public or a private?
Well, the statute is pretty, private nuisance is a single person affected or a determinate number of people. So if three people are complaining, it's a determinate number of people, in my opinion. It's an entire neighborhood or considerable, and that's what it says, neighborhood or considerable amount of people. So I can research and see what's defined as considerable. If there's any case law that defines considerable, if there's not, then it's just a dictionary. So.
Well, I can tell you.
I'm saying those are the options.
I've heard considerable.
So considerable to you is what, five, six, 12, 14?
Twenty.
Twenty? Okay. Well, that helps.
Five.
That helps because I think it was less the last time I heard about it. So.
Well, basically, anybody in woodland area has made a comment somewhere along the way.
Well, I guess from my perspective, like, I don't disagree with you, but the most important thing to me is if we're going to do anything, like you said, there's more than one property that this could affect. So we have to structure a policy that's going to be fair and equitable to everybody. So if we're going to start enforcing things, it's going to be enforced on everyone when an enforcement action occurs.
Yeah.
So we, we have to, I think, at least in my opinion, I like the concept of Kerry saying, we need to determine what, what the difference is between the private and public and then determine when, when do you take a health action versus a non-health action and things like that. So we at least have some parameters for how we're going to go forward instead of just, you know. But it's, it's, it's something that's been brought to my attention, so. It's something to at least discuss and try to come up with some type of thought process on. If we're going to do anything and how we're going to move.
I agree with you, Adam, to put out a uniform policy. To your knowledge, Adam, do you have any ideas regarding our zoning plan right now?
I went and looked last night and I saw absolutely nothing. I looked under the residential, the residential zoning ordinances and then I, or the residential zoning portion. And then I also went and looked under the enforcement guidelines and it's pretty much nothing. But looking at Verde East as well as Morton's, they had specific parameters for residential guidelines as well as commercial and industrial guidelines. And it had to do with parking of vehicles, things like that, non-used vehicles, things like that. Also the option of something like, like Bob said, you know, if you wanted to put stuff in your front yard, that's fine, check the fence, things like that. There's different parameters in that restriction essentially. So, but, but being it's a zoning issue, how they perceive it, how they do it, I don't know if those parameters would even fall under something we could enforce. You know, being it's, we would have to attack it essentially with a public health department possibly or, you know, depending on what we can and cannot do legally essentially.
Basically, the only thing we could do is go ask them.
It's possible, no it's possible, but no.
Well, no. I mean, it can be directed to the public health process, number one. Number two, if there was a determination to do a public nuisance action, then it, it's a penalty there if they don't do something. I mean, that could be the deal. Do this or we're looking at this. So, like I talked with Commissioner Olson, I said if you want me to start with a letter, I can certainly start with a letter and see. I mean, they responded to the last one, but I don't know how much I actually cleaned the last one, but I was told that whatever they were asked to clean up was done. So that wasn't through, through the state's attorney's office, the last one.
I sort of think it would be helpful to go a little bit in both directions, which is to say, the problem is that we have, you potentially drop the policy that can address that in terms of nuisance. But I also think that we should take a look at whether or not we should include it in zoning and invite the townships that have zoning authority to do the same in their zoning. And that way, you're hopefully preventing problems from ever occurring down the road. So that we're addressing the problem that exists now and potentially, you know, stymie future ones.
I think the nice thing about including it in zoning, from what I've seen, is there's a built-in appeals process and things like that too. So if a concern is broad and then they say, well, this isn't what it actually is, then they can work through appeals process, they can go through the planning and zoning board. And it actually has a pretty good function to look like to me versus just, this is what you're going to do otherwise. You know, this is what's going to happen. So.
Does Creel Township have any planning and planning?
I have no, I don't live in Creel Township.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they do.
They have their own separate.
They're aware of this?
Yeah.
We should start with that.
I think the concern has always been is who's got the oversight? Has been the constant question because it's, I mean, it's specific to this one situation. It's extraterritorial, it's, is it county, is it township, is it city?
I agree with you, but we should all get on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's where having this discussion was a positive step and trying to get us all on the same page so we can figure out whose oversight it is. But that's the same point, like I said, I think the concept of drafting a whole policy, you know, doesn't have to be anything massive, but just this is how we're, what we're expecting and how we're going to enforce it, I think, would be reasonable.
Is that individual operating a home-based business?
I have no idea.
To find home-based business.
Well, you know, is it an ongoing business that's improperly functioning based on what their current zoning is with the township? You know, I think that township has addressed ongoing home businesses in the past. To me, I guess would fall right in line with what they've done in the past for home-based businesses and commercial activities.
Okay, so what's our, what's our, what's our action then, I guess then? Allow Kerry to do some additional research and then bring us back, I don't know, on what we can and can't do versus.
Well, I can bring you back your toolbox of what you can and cannot do. And then you're going to, I can see if there's draft policies besides the ones you're looking at in zoning anywhere else. And then the commission hopefully has a variety of things to choose from.
Well, I mean, I just looked at the two counties. So yeah, there might be all kinds of different ways to enforce it.
You know, and I think that that all makes sense. And then I'd say, let's open a dialogue with the township and see whether or not there's any interest on there in changing their township zoning. And we can potentially take a look at our zoning as well at the countywide level. If that makes sense as well.
Kerry, would it make sense to send them a letter right off the bat?
I think it would. I mean, they were pretty receptive to it.
I might deal with this up pretty quick, huh?
From what, it could, for the time being.
Do we need a motion to that effect? I will clean it up. I'll second it.
Okay, so I will send them a letter and make sure that Candy has coffee for you guys.
Fifty cents might clean it all up. We have a motion in a second to have the state attorney send a letter to the individual about cleanup and then also to come back with a toolbox of options to draft a policy. Here we go. Seeing none, all favorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Go sometime. Motion Kerry. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got ten minutes this time.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go back up. And we actually ran past just a little bit to eight forty-five. So we will come back up to Richard and if I get your name wrong, excuse me.
Director or rector?
Rector.
Rector. Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. As the information that I forwarded to commissioners, I'm Rick Recker. I'm the president of the North Coast Water Fish and Congress. And I introduce you today to a program that the North Dakota Game and Fish put together. It's a partnership program. And it identifies the development of wash stations or aquatic missions, a wash. And it identifies the development of wash stations or aquatic nuisance, wash stations available by them. Now, my presence before you today is to see if Ramsey County commissioners are interested in joining what I believe will be a good approach. It's a tri-county approach to wash stations, working with Benson County and Nelson County on the development of these stations. In other words, basically developing a tri-county aquatic nuisance management group or management team to ensure that adequate wash stations are placed around our waters and recreational waters in Devil's Lake. Currently, Devil's Lake being unique in itself, represents the highest number of out-of-state registered watercraft. And any given weekend, we have anywhere from 40 to 50% of the watercraft from Devil's Lake coming from out of state. This is higher than any other body of water in North Dakota, which puts us at the greatest risk. Here in North Dakota, we have a handful, a dozen or more aquatic nuisance that exists. If we go across the river to Minnesota, they've identified approximately somewhere between 25 and 30 aquatic nuisances that exist there. If we go further east, we get to Wisconsin, there's somewhere between 30 and 35 aquatic nuisance. And these are the two states that bring most out-of-state watercraft to North Dakota, is Minnesota and Wisconsin, to our area. So, here today, I'm asking if Ramsey County would be interested in joining Benson County and Nelson County in developing a tri-county aquatic nuisance board or management team. This morning, I was on the agenda with Benson County, and they agreed that they would be interested in developing or becoming part of a team that would address aquatic nuisances and working with the game and fish and other entities to develop wash stations. So that's my question today, is there interest, no commitment by you? Or is it an interest, no financial commitment, but there is an outline there by the game and fish on that partnership program? And I'll try to answer any questions if I may.
There's no financial commitment?
Not today, I'm asking.
But in the future?
In the future, there certainly could be, right here. The sponsor will provide all the infrastructure, sponsor will be responsible solely for operating the station and all staffing. Yeah, so there would be cost, or presumably split with anybody else who agrees.
How many stations?
No idea, you got a large body of water. What I see is Nelson County putting in one down at Stump Lake, working with their park district down there. Benson County putting something over in the Minnewakan area. Ramsey County doing something along Highway 2, so it's in a highly visible, easy access location. I know that the state game and fish department is working with parks and recs at state level to put wash stations in our state parks, so Ramsey Island would probably have its own. And I'm also on the agenda to, or getting on the agenda with Spirit Lake Casino to see if Paul and those folks are interested in putting one on their property at the marina.
So sponsors are defined as anyone that wants to be?
Sponsors are individual, if you can find an individual business who wants to be a sponsor, that is certainly available. That opportunity exists.
You should talk to the city of Devil's Lake, see if they want sponsor too.
I can certainly do that, see if they want to be part of this as well. I just don't believe that there's an individual business that's going to be able to stand by itself, because I think this is underfunded in our area. In a smaller community, some small lake in southeast North Dakota or other area where they do not have 40 to 50% of the watercraft coming from out of state, they're probably more than efficient being able to handle it. But in this particular case, the amount of units that should be going through or should be being checked, that's, it's a big commitment by business, if it's going to be done effectively. One thing that, you know, in North Dakota, it sits with about, like I said, you know, only a dozen or so aquatic nuisances in our state. But the risk for the future of Devil's Lake is extremely high, because the more and more aquatic nuisances that pop up, and they're going to continue to pop up. This world's not going to change, there's going to be more and more as life goes on. So getting these stations in place and getting them done correctly the first time is really essential, especially for our community. So we may already have zebra mussels here, that's not stopping the next 10 or 20 aquatic nuisances that may be coming to North Dakota.
You think they're already here?
I don't know if they are not. The state has not been able to find any villagers in Devil's Lake, but there's certainly, if there's in Ashtria and Lamar Lake, that there's a risk that they could be here too.
You have experts right there.
I was gonna say, we got some pretty notable fishermen sitting in that.
And we discussed this at Lake Access, and Johnny Campbell had some very good points.
So, I'm Johnny Campbell, president of the Lake Region Anglers, I can stand over here and start bringing the tea. Thank you, Rich, for bringing this to attention to the county commission. And the aquatic nuisance species is a really big, I'm not sure about it. My personal background, I'm from Ohio. I remember voting on Lake Erie when the zebra mussel was first discovered, turning great links in the early 80s. And I watched the millions and millions and billions of dollars of damage that zebra mussels did to everything before it affected the sport fishing, right? Water intake, power plants, all those happenings. We're kind of fortunate in the Midwest where we live here, Devil's Lake, that we don't have a huge industry and that kind of thing with a lot of pumps and all that, that zebra mussels could clog and shut down. We do have some good pumping stations and all that, so there's a concern, not just in the recreational industry, but in the business industry as well, public utilities, all that. So I think we all agree that zebra mussels are the last thing we want in our lake. We don't want any new types of vegetation in our bodies of water, right? Because it upsets the ecology of the system, the ecosystem changes, fishing changes. And we can debate all day long what's most important to the community of Devil's Lake. But I think, again, everyone in this room would agree that if that lake goes away and that beautiful, wonderful tasting walleye disappears, we're all in a rock here, right? There's hot odour that's generated for our community, because people want to come here and catch fish out of it. Right? So, we have to fight the fight to keep that stuff out. Wash stations are definitely a step in the right direction. And I kind of will be careful here not to interject too many personal thoughts with my Lake Region Angler hat. But I've read the one-page document that was available to me about these wash stations. Maybe it's two, I'm not sure, I think it's probably the same one everyone has. And it's just enough to do what Rich has done, but it's really not enough to make a decision on. There's so many holes in the preliminary, right? Where are they going to be, who's going to bait for it, how much is going to be involved? There's a chance that it could be a hot water wash down, which needs to be manned constantly, because you can't have the public coming in spraying high-pressure hot water all over the place, burning someone's skin or taking a digit off. We all know what high-pressure hot water can do. And it doesn't say, are they going to be high-pressure hot water or are they not going to be high-pressure hot water? Are they going to be low-pressure, regular water? Well, heck, we already have car washes in Devil's Lake, North Dakota, that are the same or not the same. So, I love the fact that someone is thinking ahead, I think it's on board you. But I think somebody needs to ask a lot more questions. You know, Lake Region Anglers, we have our first meeting of the fall tonight. It's on our agenda to discuss this as a group. You know, are we going to jump behind a plan that kind of says, well, let's throw a wash station out there and see what happens? I'd love to jump behind a plan that says, here's what they're going to be, here's who's going to man them. They are required to be used, because right now they're not, it's, here's a big sign on the wash station, and if you want to drive right by it and ignore it, you can drive right by it and ignore it. If they're manned and no one's there to man it, and you come through from Wisconsin at 10 o'clock at night and you want to go fish at 6 o'clock the next morning, and yes, I was supposed to use a wash station, but there was no one there to run it for me, then does the wash station even need to? Right? Because if you miss one guy, you might as well miss the whole. So, again, I love the idea, I love the concept. We need people to get behind it, but right now I think we need a lot more questions answered. I would urge the county commission to ask some of those questions, because the more of us that ask those questions, the better off we are to get answers. Sometimes I have a way of rubbing red collars the wrong way at the state, because I don't really like the answers we speak sometimes. And I always give the answer as quickly as I could. Maybe the county commission, if they show interest, could give those answers quicker. I know Rich is asking questions from the sport fishing congress, but I think all of us need to ask these questions, not just check the box and say, sure, we're in. Because we don't even know what we're in for, it's, maybe we're going to get one, maybe we're going to get three, where do you put them, are they on the lake, off the lake, are they manned, are they not manned? I'm not on the commission, but I don't know if I could check the commitment to look at a sheet of paper and say, sure, let's give it a try.
How many, I have a question. How many cleaning stations is there, three, four?
There's cleaning stations?
Yeah, there's cleaning, yeah, three out there on.
Most independent ones.
Yeah, then there's all the hotels and whatever.
Before that, the, you know, the chamber digs, Carol, is that what you would say?
Yeah.
This is a little more complicated than a fish cleaning station.
Well, the urgency of use.
We need some more answers.
And the urgency of use, right? I'm not a fan of putting out a wash station that says, if you feel like you have the time to do this, that station. If we're going to put them up, and now we're getting into legislation and all that, but if we're going to have wash stations, then they should be mandatory if you come from out of state to use them before you put your boat in the water. Well, now we just opened a Pandora's box that's much, much bigger than Ramsey County Commission, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And is the state willing to go that step? That says, okay, we're going to put wash stations in, but if you come from out of state, you have to use them. They did issue a $15 permit requirement to at least acknowledge the fact that you understand what aquatic nuisance species are. We did that last year with the sport fishing congress. So if you come from out of state with a boat, you have to have a $15 sticker that goes on your boat. And by purchasing that sticker, at least we know you've been being aware of the fact that you could be bringing something here that we don't want. But there's no requirement that because I bought this sticker, I have to clean my boat, or because I bought this sticker, I have to dry my boat, or it's just, I bought the sticker and I can still ignore it. There is no rule saying you have to do one dang thing to protect your boat from bringing something to our water, right? There still isn't. And these wash stations, although they're a step in the right direction, they still don't come with a law or a rule that says that have to be used in order to prevent the spread of these species.
How many should there be?
Oh, you should at least have one from every direction coming to the lake, right? And they can't be on the lake, they have to be before you get to the lake. So, something in Lakota would make sense from the east, right? Something in the south, 15 miles south of the lake. Because if you let someone get to their hotel or their resort, they're not going to backtrack in the morning before they go fishing to clean their boat, right? They're going to get to their resort, they're going to make camp, they're going to get in their room, and they're going to go fish in the morning, so you got to get them before they get to the water. One of the things that's been discussed for many, many years is doing it at the border, right? Doing it at the border, we're kind of forced, we don't have a lot of thorough fairs that people get in and out of our state. Yeah, you can sneak around, right? We all know the little back road that crosses this border or that border. But try to drive through the state of Montana with the boat. Try to drive through Washington or Idaho or Oregon, because I travel to all those places with the boat. I'll get stopped three times in one day to have the same boat inspected by three different states. Because every time you cross the border with a boat behind your truck, they pull you into a boat check, and if you don't stop, the red lights come on and you get pulled over three miles down the road, don't ask me why I don't. It happens, I missed the sign, I didn't see the sign, and they got me before I could get to the next exit on the interstate. So, there are other ways. Again, wash stations are critical, it's a big part of it. I am urging Ramsey County and the city of Devil's Lake and all the townships to be involved. Our anglers club will be involved, we want this to happen. But again, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before we rubber a stamp, yes, let's move forward with this, because I don't like being involved with projects that are destined to failure because you don't have enough information. That's where I think myself and the Lake Region Anglers are going to stay on this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it seems to me like the direction that we end up going with this, or anyone who respects Devil's Lake in Florida with this will depend on how many sponsors it has. You know, if you only have three sponsors, you might, well, I've got a question for you.
On the 23rd of September, we see it's Ben Holland, not Ben Holland, and he's the ANS coordinator for the state, and one other individual are going to be at Lake Access to explain wash stations and proposals.
Well, we should probably wait a lot of the map before we make a decision.
Well, Ben said that he would come. If the Ramsey County Commission and Nelson County and Benson County agreed to join forces to develop a management team, he would come and speak directly to that group.
Yeah, I don't see, so that's where I was going, I don't see anything wrong with at least initially supporting the idea of looking at what the options are. Because I don't know that we'll be able to actually accurately look at what the options are unless we know who's all going to be involved.
Well, yeah, we have to have preliminary discussions so we can ask those questions and say, you know, what's the plan? I mean, it seems to me that game and fish should have some insight into where these things should be sitting and how we should go about doing this, plus locally, you should be able to say, that's not going to work or it's going to work. When we've got people that know the lake better, don't do anybody else.
And I would be more than willing to donate some time, you know, a meeting here, a phone call there, whatever, anybody needs to help. Both as a person and as the Lake Region Anglers president falls under what I do. Obviously, I'm passionate about the lake, anybody who knows me knows I'm passionate about the lake. And I don't want to see it, I don't want to see it destroyed by something that could be stopped, so it's very important to all of us.
Like you said, a rough outline doesn't constitute a plan yet. So I sit down and actually have the discussions about how it's going to function, who's going to be involved in all of those things, you know, commitment wise, but I don't think there's anything wrong from at least that perspective, at least starting to have those discussions.
Yeah, we need that motion and how should we work that? But I don't want to put us on a hook for whatever may come out of it, but at least to say that I'd make the motion and have it in county will.
You'll explore our options.
Yeah, explore the options that are available and contingent, on a contingent basis, support the idea of creating a wash station.
About just a tri-county management team, considering that, working with Nelson County and Benson County?
Well, they give me, any plan that would work for the lake would need to involve them. If only one of the counties is doing something, the other two are not, not accomplishing a whole lot. So I suppose that, yes, I would include that in the motion, I do look into that as well.
Is that kind of what Benson County gets this one?
Yes, exactly.
No commitment for financial, no obligation, just a remit of interest to join forces.
One should remark.
An entry, a form, join forces.
So we're making the motion that we are willing to participate to look at our options, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a second, further discussion.
I've been on that ANS committee for 10 years down in the state, and gone through a couple of different ANS coordinators. And this is a step in the right direction. You know, we talked a lot about tools in our toolbox here at the commission. And a wash station would certainly be another tool in that toolbox of ANS prevention. We get criticized a lot about our water quality downstream. But one of the things that we don't have in Devil's Lake is aquatic nuisance. We may have some additional salts and things that people may not like. What we don't have is zebra mussels, we don't have a lot of the other things that are, that we want to keep away and keep all it. And so this will go a long ways in helping out, but we need something. Like Johnny said, a lot of answers, a lot of questions to answer. But I think this is an initial step in the right direction, is joining forces with both Nelson and Benson County. But I think this is an initial step in the right direction, is joining forces with good Nelson and Benson County exploring those options. And probably including the Spirit Lake Nation on that, because there's access points and public access points within their boundaries as well. It's gonna take a team effort to keep A N S out of our area, out of our region. You know, we worked really hard, so we're back on keeping our public on our current barriers. And I think this is no exception. I think zebra mussels are, I think we do that research on them, and they're a scary master of critter that once they get in, you cannot get rid of them. They're here forever, and they oscillate like crazy.
Further discussion, a motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. We're jumping around, so it's clear where I'm at here. Pick one up the camera.
Can I ask one thing? Crystal, do you have copies of the changes that, for the COVID-19?
No.
Could you make some copies of it, just so we have it for everybody, because I don't know if anybody's seen it? Thank you, I just wanted to ask you before we got to that portion. Okay, Kevin, your.
All right. I don't know if I already got a copy of my second. All right, great. First, all of the project updates, most of the ground and done on Benson County line, but that's done now. And I pretty much finished all of our Florida projects for the summer. Any questions on that? Okay, then we got the bill for the travel on Ramsey nine B that Silver's did, and that invoice was for forty-three thousand, six hundred and five dollars. And then the motion to pay it.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion, a second, paid the bill from Silver's. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, ready to go.
Mike?
Aye. Motion carries.
Didn't we approve that before? Or was it just the approval for management? Same thing with close construction, they submitted their invoice for their county line. We did do that one mile, that first mile off the U S two, because the bridge is under water. So that's a little bit less than what the original bid was for, but their invoice was twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to pay the bill for close construction for our ground. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, we're on the, I asked Silver to do some spot ground on nine A when I reviewed nine B, and they did have nine at the time, but they did agree to do it for the same price. So it's gonna take about twelve or fifteen loans, and figure on the high side, those loans cost approximately three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's for spot ground, the soft spots that showed up, they're pretty much healed up now, they're just kinda depression, black spots, so this will be the ground one. Move it through.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to allow Silver to do some spot ground on nine A. What is that? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side.
And also, I do order a load of culverts and stock, it'll be just over thirty, around thirty thousand. And all these culverts should last into next spring, so we'll have to order them against the fall.
Move it through. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to buy culverts for stock. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by, oh, excuse me. Are we paying for them or are we ordering them? Ordering them.
Ordering.
Okay, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries, because I would think we're paying for them.
Okay, same thing with cutting, I just need to order them for now, like sort of cooperators for the rest of the summer, and also for doing winter arrangements, they're gonna cost twelve thousand and ninety dollars.
Move it through. Second. Okay, motion, a second, to buy cutting, to buy cooperators. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries.
Yeah, North Dakota Telephone Company is asking for permission to carry a fiber optic cable on the Ramsey County line on the north side of the bike path.
We've got to mention that, right?
Yes. Yeah, I guess I look at it, I don't see a problem, though it's about seven hundred and fifty feet. It'll stay within our railway. And it'll be kinda trenched in, with a migratory trench.
Motion to approve. Second. Yeah, we have a motion, a second, to allow A E T C to bring some fiber cable in the railway on County One. Further discussion? Do we don't bore them any by that?
Uh, they do, they'll go under one approach, they'll bore that, but if they're not disturbing that approach or road or something like that, then they try and quieten it.
Well, it says they're gonna bore, they need the Thompson's driveway here, so.
A little more of the driveway, we're pretty good. Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side. Motion carries.
Okay, then get five for the low pass. I think we're, probably ready, we're gonna get these, to all the townships to sign off on it, but in case like that, they don't route vehicles through these townships that haven't signed off yet, so it's just a matter of they'll have to route traffic around the townships, so that would be a free deal. Otherwise, I think we're ready to sign off the work. I had Carrie look at this agreement, and she said she didn't see any problem with it. If we want to get out of it, it's a sixty-day process, so it's still possible to get out of it in the future if we decide to do that. Just to say, Carrie didn't have an issue signing the agreement.
How many townships refused to sign up?
We got over half to sign up.
Close them down, I didn't think of that.
Yeah, all of them down, so they're part of it.
I'll move it through. Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to send the low pass agreement. Further discussion?
The only question I have, Kevin, is when they collect the fees, I've heard in other counties that the counties have retained more of the fees than the townships don't get as much back on their own. What's the split for, how this, because it doesn't really say it here. If that's settled for us, right, we get to do the setting.
Yeah, and we would just give it all back, because we don't have any interest.
Okay, so when a township road is used, they get that portion of the county road used, we get our.
Fair enough.
Some of the counties are taking.
Other counties have been, there's been some counties that have signed up for it, and they basically retain like eighty-five percent of it only. So it doesn't matter if the township road was used, the county retains the money.
Really? That's probably a minimum, all the administration.
They keep a little, yeah, some of the counties are keeping more cost, is what I think, but I don't know if this should be, but it's funny to know how we're just gonna do it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to sign on the low pass. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side.
Okay, the last thing, I was just, let you guys know, I'm gonna be taking quotes on the guardrail for that more township bridge. I think we're ready to, good, they're installed now, so we're gonna add some more birds in the site. I think, why not, sure, the coast. So we're ready to take quotes now, just so, at the next stage, I'll try to have those results. It's not gonna be high, we have to advertise the papers on two or three measures, take quotes on that.
Do you need to add two or three of that?
We'd have to, yeah, sell it to folks.
Okay.
Okay, if it comes up. I have one question to ask. I've had several calls, and you've talked about it before, on Ramsey County, where they made the cut. And then they replaced, repaired it. My question is, do they, okay, so there's a concern in terms of change in estimates through the water board, but previously there weren't those additional culverts in there. So are we going to allow them to keep the culverts in after they, after they made the cut and put a culprit in? Or are we going to ask them to take the culvert back?
So do you, we kinda turned that over to the water board? And I think they took, I don't, I think they took that meeting, but I think they took the stance that unless there was a complaint, or a complaint, they're not gonna take action.
Really?
The water board, right?
Well, I think it was, and we sat through a, one of our summer conferences for the water meetings, having an attorney where it's not the water board's authority, but it's the highway departments. It's the road departments, and responsibility, so it falls back upon us as the county.
Well, I've just, I've had the question, you know, obviously that's up in my neck in the woods, so I've had a few neighbors calling this, and, you know, if we don't essentially do something and tell them, you can't just decide you're gonna put additional culverts in someplace, then what's gonna stop the next guy from going on? And I understand fresh and open that argument, because essentially at this point in time, if the water board won't do anything about it, and we won't do anything about it, then essentially somebody just got to do additional drainage without
Right.
having to ask anyone.
Well, I assume we're still, it was still an issue. You know, that the water board hasn't returned a board of action to this, or what we're supposed to consider. So I was waiting for the water board. I didn't think of the dead issue at all.
I didn't think it was necessarily a dead issue, but I just wanted to bring it up to see where we're at, or anything, because I've had the question multiple times.
Uh, did you get in on that water board yet?
Uh, did some pieces of it.
Who is the chairman again?
Brian Volk.
Can you give Brian all the background?
But I'm pretty sure that during our, our, and that webinar that we had partied them in the summer conferences, that it fell back upon the county highway. So I wanted to. You know, so if we, and this is what I think should happen, is that we should ask the landlord to remove those culverts, or we will do it for them, and build them back for them.
Well, I wanna make sure we have jurisdiction to do whatever we're gonna do, but I just wanted, I just wanted to know where we were at on it, more of a question than anything, to see.
Yep, Jeff, I would answer that question. I wouldn't let the landlord back in there. We didn't want him in there. First of all, and we don't want him back in there, yeah.
Okay.
So they were in the wrong stepping in there, first of all. We don't want that to happen. If we're gonna do something, you're gonna have Kevin in charge, and put it back to what we want.
Well, do we actually, I mean, apart from billing them for the costs, I mean, shouldn't, is that fine enough? You know, or should we, is there some ability to levy a fine? Because you really don't want private citizens to feel empowered to go and do whatever they want, with child robbery, wherever they want to.
At least without the commission.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, I mean, it's, it's tough to put your head around the fact, but I mean, if it's in the county or railway, it's no different than the county courthouse or the county shop, I mean, it's the county property. I mean, and they went on, and just decided they were gonna do something, and, and it's, like I said, I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way, but I just wanted to know where we're at, if we heard back. You know, because I have, like I said, I've gotten multiple calls saying, well, what are you going to do about this, essentially? And I didn't have a good answer yet because I had.
I've been talking with Carrie, she said it would be something along the lines of destruction of public property, or along those lines, and it would have to be turned over to the sheriff's department for an investigation. Based upon what their findings from that investigation would come up with, charges appropriate to it. And then there's, you know, just the levels of, of criminal activity, or, you know, fines and, and or criminal, you know, ten thousand dollar fines, class B misdemeanor, whatever type of situation they determine, but and then I would certainly encourage the private residents who are affected by that to bring up a civil lawsuit to reclaim the damages from the flooded crops that were caused by that action.
Well, yes, on the level, you know, the county commissions, but we know there are in some provinces they're coming, cutting a hole in the wall of the county commission room upstairs so that they have easier parking access.
Right.
And it's not really any different.
And since county railway is county property, and we retain that for a reason, I mean, it's not, it's supposed to be left to me. I just wanna, so, I mean, we don't have to pick any action, I just wanted to bring it up so we can get some clarity on how we're supposed to move forward, so we can address it probably in our next meeting or meeting afterwards, wherever it's gonna be. But just so it's not forgotten, we have some options on what we're gonna do, or at least get some clarity on it.
We're gonna do something, yeah, you're right, Kevin. We're gonna do something, we gotta let Kevin get on it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're already, yeah, we're already the first meeting of September, so. Wait, if we're gonna do anything about it, like take the, you know, make a move to take them back over, whatever, that's what we need, and we have to do some time to actually.
One thing, Kevin, what do you think, if you looked at it, you could come up with some type of plan to put it back to water park? We'd house a whole lot of cotton.
Who can you just move it? There's one on an actual township road, but now we got to replace it. The other three are on two of which is.
The township road one, the township that is saying now, okay? Or is it up on the railway?
It is on the railway.
We're gonna work with that. I hope we can just come to some type of agreement, put it back to water park.
I think we have the equipment we can do ourselves, help reduce costs.
Maybe that's something we should do now, I mean, like Kevin said, here we are in September. We get a snowstorm in October, Kevin's not handling it, he's pretty busy.
Yeah, it's a worst storm in far up.
Yeah. Don't talk about that.
I would make a motion to have Kevin put it back to the way it was, you know?
Let's have a look at it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, but if we need to go to a penalty like sheriff's department, which we probably don't want to change the evidence.
Well, I think everybody knows that would affect you.
So we gotta do.
But, I mean, would it make sense to start by approaching the landlord and getting them to agree to pay the cost of taking out the culverts and bringing them back to normal? And I don't know if we find them on top of that or not, if they won't agree, then at that point you pursue potentially the sheriff's department. Is that, would that be fair?
Should we offer them the chance to do a consultant, just a thought?
But like we talked earlier, we don't want to back it in the ditch.
Right, unless we oversee the.
Well, I think it's a deal where it's our railway, they should have been in it in the first place. We should do it, and we should close it back up initially, in terms of the cost of what it's gonna cost us to rebuild it, and put it back to the way it was.
Kevin, you believe you can fit it in your works backlog?
This one, I'll go right up there. I'll go right past our own chips, and we'll be busy for three days.
Well, let's.
Let's go to it. Let's go. Go back to where it was.
I could wait until I'm graduating, I'm still getting it, I could've.
I just wanna make sure we have clarity to make sure we're making, we have the authority to make the decision. I'm assuming we do it's our right, but, you know, I wanna step on it, until the, the water board, you know, until we have clarity for now.
Okay. We'll probably get that clarity before the next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, if we get some clarity and we still have time at the next meeting to make a decision, we'll allow you guys to get the work done. So it doesn't get crazy in fact for September. That's okay with everybody?
Sorry, can we not have clarity from the water board? Did they not?
Well, I guess.
Did they punch it back to the highway for?
Well, that's.
Just want to make sure.
That's the assumption, I guess. We haven't had anything written from them or documentation, I guess. Has anybody seen any specific documentation stating what they're doing or what they are doing? I haven't.
No, I just, okay. I think there's been a lack of communication and need to know who is going to be conveying that information to who, that thing. You know, I think last time around it wasn't properly conveyed and I don't know if they fully knew about it or, I don't know if it was, because I don't know if it was on their agenda for this last meeting and, um, probably should have been, um, before their discussion.
Well, I apologize if I sprung this on this meeting, but I just saw culverts up there and it made me think that, that I got culverts, so I just put it up.
Do we want to make a directive to the water board?
When, when the meeting?
They meet Monday the fourteenth, I think.
So they, what we mean? I would say, yeah, let's, let's make sure that they have the discussion if they haven't, give us some clarity on what their position is and then we could have Carrie also look into, is it theirs or is it our decision to make? And then we can, that second meeting in September, then we'll have to drop that, what we're going to do.
Do you want the motion or not?
Doesn't matter. I mean, it's, it's.
I didn't want to make a motion.
No, I didn't. I, I, you were thinking that, that you were thinking about.
Part was thinking about.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll make, I'll change it. I'll make my, my motion to direct the water board to come up with a decision at their next meeting so that we can discuss what we're going to do at our next meeting.
I like that.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion. And concurrently I'll bring it up with Carrie just so she can make sure that we get some clarity. Okay, hold on, go by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same side. Motion carries. All right, very good. Thanks, Kevin. I appreciate it. Okay. Okay, up to open the team discussion. I can basically leave the, uh, leave the discussion on. The, because we, we had a couple of changes that arose from, um, the survey as well as discussion that occurred at the department head meeting last week. We needed some clarity on a couple of different things, a little bit of a bullet at the, at the end here. He just doesn't have that at all. Okay, so essentially, uh, yeah, the use of masks, because there's customers where we made that change. Uh, so there was essentially two different questions. The question of, we've had a directive in the past that, uh, when you are outside of your workspace as an employee, uh, you should be wearing a mask. Uh, the question then was asked, uh, how about meeting usage? So if everybody comes together for a meeting, so does that technically count as their workspace or does that technically count as out of their workspace? Uh, and that question was brought up at the last department head meeting. Uh, Crystal directed it to public health and I asked public health to be here today, but I never got a response. But she asked public health for clarity on it and Al said that, uh, we should be requiring, uh, under the directive from the, uh, department of health, that whenever they're outside their workspace in any capacity, they should be wearing masks at all times. So even if they go to a, a meeting or something like that and there's multiple people in the room, then they should be wearing a mask at all times. Uh, and that's the department of health's, uh, opinion. Now, it doesn't mean we have to necessarily adopt it, but that is what their opinion was, so that change has been made to the operating plan. Um, and then the other one was the question of, and this came up in the survey, uh, and, uh, accommodating employees with children when it comes to, uh, now that we have schools starting back up. I'm probably the only one that has a kid in school anymore. So I'm probably the most, uh, I've looked at probably to this the closest, the closest of all people, but so there's, and I could probably have Crystal explain it, but there's the families first, something I can't remember, FFRCA. And then there's FMLA and then there's different guidelines under the FFRCA for how things are handled when it comes to leave. And we're required to give our staff certainly when it comes to education of children, um, in concurrence with allowing them the ability to do things like telegraphing, things like that. So we, we just, essentially the, the overarching message is we're going to have to be flexible with our employees because the law through the end of the year is we have to be flexible for them when it comes to, uh, teaching kids. Uh, and, and the reason we have to be flexible is, and I, I double checked the plan for, and I don't know the public school plan, I haven't read theirs completely, but I've read St. Joe's. And the minute we have one positive in the school, whether it's a student or a staff, we are closed off for 72 hours. The second one that happens after that first one, so if there's one positive and we have a positive within the next two weeks following that of one of our students or staff, we are closed for two weeks. And we go to distance learning. So the concern of any of that is, I would assume the public school has something similar in place. At the drop of a hat, we could have employees that all of a sudden are saying, my kid's going to be learning a whole lot more than I did. You know, and we have single parent households, we have two parent households, so we have to be essentially flexible. So that's essentially what this change is saying, um, is that we are, uh, uh, you know, recognizing that the, the act is in place, we are going to follow the law as it states. There are excluded employees, which are emergency responders like sheriff's deputies, child welfare workers, service providers and the emergency manager. So they are excluded because they are considered essential workers. Uh, now that doesn't mean that we can't make accommodations from a department head if they have the ability to do so, but we don't, we aren't required to do so, where the accommodations have to be made for all of our employees.
Quick, quick sidebar, which is very important. Um, your last subbullet point there, second sentence, uh, you might want to strike the word under the end of the sentence because it doesn't make sense.
Is it?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so the last subbullet point on the first page, second sentence, which ends with unless an employee elects to use existing county vacation or sick leave under a period.
Oh.
Sorry, so what were you at? We're processing here. Uh, essentially, so, yeah, uh, the, the only question I would have, or not question, but I'm rambling here, I realize. Um, so then the other component of this is talking about children in the workplace because if something happens at the drop of a hat, what are we going to allow our employees to do? Uh, Crystal reached out to our insurance. We got guidance that, uh, we should, and, and from public health as well, stating that we obviously don't want more people in the building than we need in the building. But if it's a short term, you know, oh, school had to close at noon, I have nobody to watch my kid for a couple of hours. They couldn't come into the building as long as they stay in their parents' workplace, but they have to be older than nine years old because our insurance said anything younger than that and we have liability issues. So that's how the plan is written as is right now. Uh, the other thing that I would make note of is on that FFRCA, when we are required to give that parent leave to go, uh, uh, home to teach a child, if we can't make the accommodation, then we still pay them, but they are at two thirds rate of pay. Once they get past their initial two weeks if they want to use the COVID portion of it previous to the FFRCA. So the question is, do we want to, we, we can be more, uh, lenient than that, I guess is probably not the. We can say we will keep people at full pay or we can even two thirds like the FFRCA, it's just we will only be reimbursed from CARES Act dollars to that two third rate. Because this is all reimbursable from the federal government because it's a, it's a mandate that they're requiring of us uh, through the 31st of December this year. So, I'm sorry if I didn't have really clarity on that, but it's kind of convoluted because there's multiple tracks of what's going on here from federal government, from FMLA, from all kinds of different things going on. So it's an addendum to the policy as stated, uh, to cover so that our employees have some clarity about how it's going to be handled if that does happen. In all honesty, I don't know how many kids we have, uh, how many of our employees have kids in school age. I'm sure there's a decent number. We have a lot of employees. And, uh, Ron and staff would be treated slightly differently, obviously, because of state guidelines versus, versus the county guidelines comparatively, but they would be similar. You have FFRCA guidelines and all that too, so.
We have about 25 kids under, most are under nine unfortunately, so I, that was news, so.
And, and we had, and we discussed that back and forth. It's just the question of, you know, I understand like the concern too, because at the drop of a hat, if you've got a kid and what are you going to do with them type of thing, but that was the guidance from the insurance company is that we should know, you know, just because once you're under the nine, I mean, I have a five year old and she's kind of, I, I wouldn't want her to talk about that.
So. Yeah. They, they did mention that first time I did mention that, you know, that 15, 20 minutes, we know where kids need to get to sort of come to school.
That, that would be okay. And, and we still have it written as long enough, if I'm reading it correctly, that it's still a question of the department head if it's a 15 or 20 minute window or something where you're just trying to make like, okay, I had to pick the kid up, I'm making a plan, trying to find grandparents or whatever. You can sit with your kid at work and make that accommodation. But we just, like I said, I think the most important thing in, in hearing back from the department head meeting for multiple different department heads, is we just, we need to be flexible because who the heck knows if something happens. It's kind of what it looks like. I mean, for flexibility standpoint, I don't know what we're going to do if something happens because the kids are going to be right in the pile by the way.
I'll make the motion without you, huh?
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Motion, a second. Great, the second, okay. Further discussion and questions. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, so I want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask any questions that they, uh, that they have. And, and for open, honest, for clarity, there was a split at the department head meeting on how we should handle kids in the workplace if at all. Some thought that it shouldn't be something that should be allowed, some thought it would be okay. This is kind of a middle ground in saying if it's a short term thing, we'll deal with it, but it's not a long term solution. And we're going to give you flexible working options and you can get home with your kid then and teach him at home at the age. But if it's a after them or something, we have to accommodate both, accommodate as best we can.
Childcare, real problem. Real problem.
Well, you know, especially in the situation now where you have some grandparents that are trying to distance and stuff like that, well, that's usually the fallback. All grandparents.
I just told Lucas, like, we had grandparents changing their phone numbers.
Something go crazy.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not.
I don't know what, in all honesty, having kids, it's an eye opening experience because I don't know what we're doing about grandparents and, and the community around us who are helping kids. I mean, it's just, uh, we always do, you know, you never know when something's going to come up, straight up. I'm lucky, I've got two sets of grandparents, twenty, within twenty minutes.
Right. So you're saying it's true that old snake takes the bill of insurance?
It does. It does take the bill of insurance.
Well, I think half of our staff maybe forgot that. As far, our, our, our department heads, it was eye opening and sad actually.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's, it's tough too if you, if you not used to having kids and all that. And I understand the requirement to make sure that the workplace still functions, but there is, you know, flexibility isn't in the game right now, is basically what I'm thinking. So we have a motion and a second. We'll go to discussion. Questions. You okay with the two thirds now?
So this just goes on the first of the year then?
The FFRCA does, yes. Then that'll hold true until, and then we'll see if they do an extension or how they're going to handle it after January 1st. Uh, at that point, we'll have to probably change policy depending upon where we're at. It's kind of the nature of this whole thing. We're just, we've had to make changes as we've gone along because guidance has changed and things have changed and we obviously don't know. But yeah, this is, this will be good through September. And we'll see what the, what Congress does or does not.
I certainly think being flexible and accommodating for parents is the key.
Yeah.
Because nobody knows what's going to happen.
Well, the most important thing really is, I guess I look at it from this perspective, where we have good employees, we have, we got them here. We need to be flexible so we can keep them. You know, as long as the work is being accomplished, let's be flexible and work with them because if it costs a lot of money to train a new employee or have turnover because they had to quit their job because you weren't trying to help make it work. Okay, uh, further discussion. So none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the second. Okay, Carrie's, very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, approval of the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement between Ramsey County and Dakota Prairie Community Action. I can have, I can have Ron to kind of fill, I can run one too, but.
Um, this is an agreement with Perry London. Um, it's been a long process of getting to know the world of Justin Nestor and Russ Krasinski. I mean, so, um, this is FEMA funds. Um, we had to get, uh, Mr. Perry London graciously agreeing to be our fiscal agent and apply for the FEMA grant. Um, the FEMA funds will come to Ramsey County. He's done a lot of work for our county to get those grants for the non-congregate housing for COVID positive people that need to quarantine or are homeless. So we appreciate his work. Part of that work is we need a memorandum so that when we get the funds, we can pay, uh, Dakota Prairie back. It costs about $1,400 for 10 days or 14 days, depending, give or take some odd dollars for, um, our non-congregate housing. We have housed, uh, since, the, the, to give you a little history, the program was started by the, the Department of Human Services person, Sarah. She has a background in, um, homeless housing projects. And so she started it with the idea that it would be handed off to the counties. That thing goes so swimmingly well, but, um, we did manage to come together and figure out a way to pay for it. Um, it's 75% of it is FEMA dollars, 10% is reimbursed by the state of North Dakota, and 15% of CARES Act dollars through our health department. And so we have a memorandum with Ramsey, Towner, Benson, those are the three counties I'm involved with. Ramsey, Towner, Benson and Rolette because of my job as the, um, general director for our agency. I know the state person is working directly with Cavalier Emergency Manager and Cavalier County Emergency Manager and A County Emergency Manager to get this memorandum signed with their commission. So, um, we have, unfortunately, um, there are a good time, 15 to 20 people in our non-congregate housing because if you live with someone and you're COVID positive or you, or you need to quarantine, you know, they say, sorry, you can stay here, you need to leave. So, um, I think that so far since the state quit administering the program, so to speak, we've had about four people, so, fine. So as of July 19th or 20th, we've housed five people under this from Ramsey County. So, um.
We've been running, running it through the water board. Would you say July 15?
July 19th, 15th.
So six weeks we've had five people. Yeah, so it's, it gave you a lot.
Tanya, um, Tanya Jana from our agency does the intake. There are very strict rules. A lot of people don't make it and they just say, okay, no thanks. Because you can't leave the room. We have, um, uh, the, the, um, Larry Leonard from Rolette County, the senior meals coordinator, uh, has been very, very helpful. So our senior meals is very helpful also. They'll deliver food, there's a bridge in my hallway in the units that we use and the motel that we use. So they deliver Saturday and Sunday out of Friday. Um, so we've, we've, um, Spirit Lake Nation has, I believe they have 15 rooms being used right now. So it's very busy. Um, with our numbers ticking up, I expect that, you know, continuing, we haven't had a high knee, thank goodness, but so that's kind of where we're at. We hope to have a, um, an agreement tomorrow, I believe, or maybe Thursday, we have a meeting with Justin Nestor and. So, that's kind of where we're at, we hope to have a, um, an agreement tomorrow, I believe, or maybe Thursday, we have a meeting with Justin Nestor and Russ Krasinski, I don't know if I just finished his name right, um, with Turtle Mountain to see if we can do some of our course from Rala to drive to the shelter, the non-congregate shelter in Douglas Lake, which is a motel, is very difficult. If someone's COVID positive or had close exposure, normally less than a ride. So, um, we're going to work with, um, tribal partners there to see if we can voyeur in on their contract or their, with their agreement. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. Thanks.
Sorry. We have a motion in the second to send the documents with the, the MOA, with the work, with the action, further discussion. All I'll say is a thank you to Ranga and, and everybody that's putting the MOA together because the state kind of just, I think they thought that we weren't going to need it anymore and all of a sudden it started to, we need it again and we had to get something, we had to get something together real quick and it's functioning.
Yeah, there was a communication break between public health and emergency managers too that was unfortunate. I don't know how that all shut down, but, um, very much, um, I needed service, like I said, four or five people is in a lot, but if you're that, one of those four or five people in a lot, it also creates a couple of trouble issues if you go out somebody.
True, that's very.
I will, he's been very, very good to work with, um, he, he thought he could have brought it his own, he ended up using, of course, using our FEMA number. If I just have, I got, you know, I'll use a little copy, I gotta send that to him as quick as I can. Um, so he ended up using our, it's our FEMA dollars, um, which I wasn't totally aware of how that worked either, so apparently at the beginning of the pandemic, our emergency manager applied for FEMA dollars or is it just a given, I don't know what that process is, but we used our FEMA number, so. I, Dakota Prairie will pay and we will reimburse, because we're going to get the money, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Further discussion. So we're done, all in favor, both by saying aye?
Aye.
Close the second. Motion carries. I guess I signed it before we, alright. Okay. We are up to this, the. Okay, portfolios, Commissioner Frith.
Not a whole lot, we heard a good presentation from Sarah today on what's going on in the calling agents office, uh, state's attorney is, uh, carrier, he's busy with, uh, different things, their staff is still half time, courts are being done by telephonic, um, type of situations. Uh, they're going to reevaluate, uh, staff back in the office, uh, full staff anyway, uh, reevaluate that on point basis. Airport authority, $1.4 million in CARES Act, uh, sounds like a for sure deal over the next four years, so, uh, O and M, money that will be coming into the Douglas Lake Airport, uh, that initial report of $16 million, um, we're still looking at what portion of that, whether it could come to Douglas Lake Airport. It's certainly, certainly a lot of wishes and wants and needs out of the airport, uh, that, you know, um, money certainly can be spent, but, you know, it's not going to be there, we're not going to spend it, kind of thing. And Chamber, uh, a lot of things been put on hold, uh, with some of their activities, uh, blind walk was canceled. Uh, that was their big September event for the Chamber, but, uh, a lot of people feeling uncomfortable with having that many people walking, uh, walking downtown and visiting their establishments. Coming in, it's a very well attended event, um, they did have their Chamber help hall holding on Friday, which was, uh, well attended and good, uh, participation in that, so COVID's kind of thrown them on the pressure a little bit there with them.
Okay, which one?
Everything's pretty quiet, we heard from Lake Access. How DC is running very well, high counts, yesterday we were at 96. It's, it's doing well. And that, the whole world's pretty quiet.
And Bethany? Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, social services, you had last week, very lucky. Any veil? Maybe, you had a party on her, yes, we did have, 25 years she was there. Here today?
It's Chinese. It's already September, you can't believe it, it's already September. Congratulations there. Commissioner Wicksy. What's going on in the Western Conference?
Thank you.
Quiet. And all I'll say is, you guys heard from pretty much everything I've been to.
I've got four of them play tomorrow, social services last week, for a penny about that, and, uh, I have a county meeting in the morning. With that, it's been pretty quiet, I'm just trying to get, get a rest. Another quarter, there's frost.
40th September, it's already the lead. Okay, anything else for the middle of the order? No, it's. See nothing, we're good.